Thank you so much Chair Delgado.
Okay. It is, what time is it? What time is it?
6:35 PM.
6:35 PM, we're calling to order the Planning Commission meeting. And I will read the hybrid meeting public participation by Zoom or in person. Notice the Planning Commission will hold its public meetings in person. With a virtual option for the public participation based on availability to someone. About the utilization of Zoom tele fencing technology and virtual public participation. However, we make no representation or warranty of any kind regardless of the adequacy, reliability and availability of the use of the platform. In this matter, participation by members of the public through this means it is at their own risk. Zoom tele fencing may not be available all at all meetings. If you wish to make public comments remedy during the meeting, please use the Zoom registration link below. This meeting will be open to the public under the conditions that attendees must comply with. And wear a mask covering it fully vaccinated and show proof if providing proof of attendance will be will not need to wear a mask covering if you are exempt from this state based covering guidance or not truly vaccinated. You will be required to wear masks at this to attend a meeting. All attendees must comply with any other rules of procedures, instructions announced by the Chair and/or staff. Any violations of the above may result in the Chair closing the meeting effectively immediately or clearing the room as well as other enforcement actions. The meeting will be available through Zoom for those who wish to join or require accommodation with the instructions below. Okay. Hey, with that. Can we take roll call, please?
Yes, thank you Chair. Vice Chair Jackie Morris Lopez.
Yes.
Perfect.
Present.
Wonderful, thank you Jackie or Vice Chair Commissioner David Maderos.
Yes, here.
Chair Yolanda Delgado.
Present.
And note the Commissioner Kria is absent tonight and is excused.
Excused, yes, thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Okay, and let's do Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to which republic it stands.
One. Which stands one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Justice, okay. We're out of sync guys, we're out of sync. There's nothing new, right? Okay, number two, the public comments on items not on agenda B within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the person designed to address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda. The law does not permit commissioners' action or extend discussion of any item not on the agenda except under special circumstances. If the commission action is required, the commissions may not may place the matter on a future agenda. Um, do we have any hands raised or is there anybody in the auditorium to to speak on anything?
Uh, there's no one in the council chambers that wishes to speak.
For those that are joining us by Zoom tonight, thank you for attending. If you'd like to speak during public comment, please raise your hand by using the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or for those that have dialed in, please press star nine and that will raise your hand. Once you raise your hand and you are brought in, the unmute yourself and your three minute timer will start. Those who've dialed in to unmute yourself, you'll press star six. Again, now is the time to raise your hands to speak under public comment. Chair, we have no hands raised at this time.
Okay. But we'll close that and now we go to informal project review. Ryan, is there any informal project reviews?
Uh, there are no items for informal review.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to four consent items. Um, for A approve the affidavit of posting agenda. B approve the affidavit of the posting and mail in public hearing notice. And for C approve minutes of September 6th, 22 meeting, let's take this at one at a time. Does anybody want to pull anything from any of the meetings minutes? David, would you like to pull anything from the meeting?
No, I'm good with that.
I'm sorry. Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry Commissioner David. Uh, Vice Chair Jackie, do you want to pull any of the minutes?
No Chair.
Okay, do we have anybody in the audience that wants to comment on this?
So anyone who would like to request an item pulled and be considered separately or has a comment on the consent agenda items, please raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. Or for those that have dialed in, press star nine. We have no hands raised at this time from anyone on Zoom.
Perfect, um, thank you, um, do we, can I have someone make a motion to pass?
Do we have anyone in the audience?
For A, for B, for C.
There are no, there are no, no one in the council chambers wishes to speak.
Okay. Can I have a motion to pass the agenda for A, B and C?
Yeah, can I ask one more question about, I just thought about it. Um, I'm just wondering, I read two minutes uh, that was presented for this, for this day. And the only thing that I'm asking about is what's been written, it says that you have somebody who spoke, but you don't write down what they spoke about. So it, that's a little different from what we used to read. So why is that being omitted? I'm just curious.
Where was that at David?
That was in both minutes of the meeting. Uh, they're, they're saying that someone spoke, but they didn't put in there what they spoke about. And that would be, that was, that was written in all of the minutes. And if anybody said anything, what they said was not written in the minutes. But it did, it did mention that that person spoke. It could have been a council member, it could, I mean, it could have been a board member, it could have been a commissioner, it could have been a public. So I just, I'm just asking the minute writers, why are they doing that? Because that's a little different from what I've been seeing. That's my question before we motion to move.
Okay, Brian, do we have anything? Yes, I, I can see where where you're at on six, see where Karavon made public comments, you know, their comments, but didn't write what the comments were. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I forgot to bring that up in the last minutes.
Okay.
For the, for the resources board. I thought about it again, sorry, I'm late.
It's okay. Brian?
Yeah, so, so my understanding is that they are summary minutes, of course, they're minutes appear to be more summary than you might like. So my suggestion is that if the commission would like to have a more, a better description of what was said, um, we can expand the summary to include, for example, um, you know, reference to the topic of the comment made, that kind of thing. Um, if that, is that what you're referring to that you're, you're more used to?
Well, that's what I did see and I saw the change and just wondering whether we really need to stay going that new direction. And if we are going in that new direction, why are we doing that? That's fine, I just want to know what the reason is. Uh, we do have the audio recordings and video recording, so maybe that's what, uh, maybe we need to refer that. You want to know more details, I don't know. But it's just a little different than what I've been reading. That's all, that's what I wanted to comment on.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know what the rest of the board members think or the commissioners think, but I'm just bringing that up, should that be? Should we be, should we be more concerned about that? I don't know. I know that I can go to the recorder, to the recordings, whether it's audio or video, I know I can do that if I want details. I'm just leaving it up to the rest of us.
But yeah, I, I agree, there should be a synopsis, a small summary of what they said for us to recall. Because going back into that is
Who knows?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I, Chair, you do have a commission member with their hand raised, Jackie Morris Lopez, and I'm more than happy to also address a little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
That's the wish of the commission, but I will obviously ask us to Commissioner Morris Lopez at this point.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead Jackie, go ahead Vice Chair.
Yes, thanks. Thank you Chair Delgado, and yes, I, I thank you Commissioner Maderos for, for the pickup and I do agree it leaves anyone that maybe prefers written review of written minutes versus watching a video. Um, but it would be nice to have a summary, uh, especially the public, I think. It's important that, you know, we acknowledge their participation and in respect to their comments that reflect the item that is in discussion. I think it would be very critical and very helpful to have a summary of detail, uh, you know, not like four paragraphs, but definitely, you know, the important points of what they're stating, I mean, if they're very succinct and to the point, then of course you're not going to need to write a lot. I think we need to get the idea and reflect what that audience member of public was, was trying to convey. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to have that put in the record for the historical resources board too as well. If that's possible.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you David.
So I'll make a motion with the exception of, uh, what we, what we have comments about, uh, that I go ahead and make a motion that we approve items A, B and C or just, are we just going to say, um, just see what are we going to do here, Yolanda?
Um, Norma was going to add something to that, go ahead, Norma, what were you going to say on this?
Thank you Chair, I'm more than happy to add, Brian is right. We have, um, as a city, we have presented our minutes as action to light summary minutes. That is a very prudent way of moving with your minutes as an organization. Want to be very careful about summarizing what someone has to say because without doing like a verbatim, you can get yourself into a little bit of misinterpretation. So it is in protection of the city to have presented the minutes as we have in the past. I do apologize that these minutes don't look exactly as they have been presented in the past. As you know, you've had some substitute clerk attending and that clerk was doing the minutes and so the style did more represent the new clerk, I will make sure that these minutes are corrected to reflect San Juan Batista's style before getting them presented to staff and getting signatures collected, so I have noted what you guys are requesting. And moving forward, the minutes will be written as you have seen in the past. And so again, I apologize that I didn't catch that in these two minutes and make those corrections before they got into your board packet, is that, you know, as your clerk advisor, that is my responsibility. And so I apologize for that, we'll make a better diligence of making sure that these minutes reflect as you have seen previously, so thank you for pointing it out. Uh, but I do want, I did want to add that part about the difference between a summary verbatim and just making sure that we understand we do action minutes. And have only for months and for quite some time because that is important. And you stated exactly Commissioner Maderos that you have the audio recording to go back to. So I love that you guys are paying attention to this stuff, it's very beautiful.
Okay. Go ahead, I, you want me to make a motion or do you?
No, I wanted to ask Norma, do, how do we rectify this? Do we?
You can make a motion and even have A, B and C.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, make a motion to accept the consent calendar with amendments as noted to the minutes.
Okay David.
Okay.
So moved.
Need a second.
I'll, I'll second that.
Wonderful.
Can we take a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you Chair. Chair Yolanda Delgado.
Hi.
Commissioner David Maderos.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jackie Morris Lopez.
Hi.
Motion passes with unanimously members present.
Okay. Now the public hearing items, consideration of a resolution of the San Juan Batista Planning Commission to accept the recommendation. I'm going on five A now. Um, a consideration, five A is a consideration of resolution of the San Juan Batista Planning Commission to accept the recommendations of the historical board to provide a site and design review permit for historic resorts for the renovation and reconstruction of a single family residence located at 903 Third Street. Okay, with that, um, Brian?
Yes. Uh, so, uh, the historic resources board.
Chair, this is Vice Chair Morris Lopez, we're in the audience that.
Jackie, I, I, we can't hear you, could you please say something, repeat what you're saying?
There, there is a, Jackie, are you, uh, 16502830512? Uh, under attendees and also panelist. There we go.
I am disconnected from my phone, I hung up, so that.
That could have been the problem, so we can hear you.
Go ahead, go ahead. What were you saying Jackie? Jackie Morris, Vice Chair Jackie Morris Lopez, are you there?
If I may, I believe what I was hearing Commissioner Morris Lopez stating is that there was someone with their hand raised in the attendee list.
I'm saying that I'm not on on the phone, I'm actually, yes Chair, can you hear me? Yes.
Well, we don't see any hands raised in the attendees list at this point.
I, I was going to let you give your comments on this and then ask for comments after your review on this, Brian, is that okay?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Of course. So, so this is a, before the planning commissioner recommendation from the historic resources board uh, regarding a reconstruction and renovation of a single family home at 903 Third Street. Um, it comes to you via the historic resources board with a recommendation for approval. Uh, in your staff report, attached to your staff report, you have, um, a draft resolution, planning commission. You have proposed plans, uh, site and design review and development plans for the project. Exterior colors, materials and lighting. Um, and historic resources inventory DPR page which lists the status of this building uh, that requires an historic resources evaluation by an architectural historian which was completed and that evaluation was completed August 6th with an update August 27th and peer reviewed by Kent Seavy on August 16th. And then there are some comparison photographs also in your packet uh, that compares a 509 Second Street with 903 Third Street, both of which are considered to be companion structures, uh, built during the same time period with 509 Second Street being instructive regarding the style of building to be reconstructed. So, uh, in this particular case, um, with the historic resources board recommendation for approval, that of course is also the staff's recommendation. Um, and what I'd like to do, uh, real quickly here is to share my screen. Um, which, um, I think we're going to be able to look at the resolution that's proposed uh, here, uh, this resolution of the planning commission. Um, and several whereas is referencing the, the, the context for this application as I just explained. Um, and then, um, uh, referencing the project as categorical categorically exempt from CEQA uh, based on the project's consistency with the Secretary of the Interior standards, uh, for this type of project. Um, and then uh, there are several conditions of approval, uh, in addition to the findings. Uh, there's a list of findings and evidence that are required for site, uh, design, site and, uh, and uh, site plan and design review permit. Uh, those are contained in your resolution. And then in addition, um, there are several conditions requiring prior duitions of a building permit that the applicant submit a detailed monitoring plan um, that will reference the improvements necessary to maintain the status of this, uh, project as consistent with the Secretary of the Interior standards. Um, and then, um, we want them to submit, uh, detailed plans for repair and renovation of the front porch in particular. Calling that out because the front porch is substantially damaged through the uh, reconstruction process, uh, roof framing, consistency with the design guidelines, uh, sufficient to maintain the original uh, design of the building and the porch in particular. Um, and then, um, we're, we want the plans to reference the character defining features of this building within the Stucco Bungalow Historic District reference in the City of San Juan uh, inventory and context statement. We know there isn't such a historic district, but there is reference, uh, to the need for such a district in the context statement, so it's important to, uh, reference that, uh, in the condition of approval. And then we want them to submit, uh, a landscape plan, of course, um, close out the re redevelopment of reconstruction of the building and the site. Um, and it's important to look at the site because it is, it is a part of the context for this particular, uh, single family home. And then, uh, we want the applicant to provide, uh, for an updated form uh, prepared by the project's architectural historian that references a new status code because the existing status code is 7R, which requires the evaluation. Now that's done, uh, the, the appropriate code would be 5D3 which establish it as locally significant, um, by San Juan Batista. And, uh, although it's not conclusive that it'd be eligible for listing, it's at least important to the City of San Juan Batista that we recognize structures like this um, as relevant to our, our historical context. Um, so that concludes the staff report. And I, I understand the applicant's representative is here. Uh, well, the applicant is here, not sure about the representative. Uh, so I'd be happy to answer any questions and to put up any additional, uh, information uh, that the planning commission would like, uh, relevant to the reconstruction project.
Thank you Brian, could we have the representative or and the owner of the property speak and then I'll take comments from the public and then from the commissioners? What, is a representative there Brian?
Let's see, may I speak?
Yeah. Yes, there you go.
Uh, yes, so I, I, I am the owner.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, um, I, I really don't have any comments, I, uh, Sonya and I decided to attend this meeting just to make sure that there weren't any questions that uh, didn't go unanswered. Or it's our fervent hope that, uh, you know, we can continue with the construction. And, uh, you know, under the guidelines that, you know, were just mentioned like, uh, you know, for example, the paint and um, we're also looking into the possibility of, you know, getting uh, front windows that are more period, um, appropriate, but it's, it's, you know, it's a TBD thing right now, uh, depending on availability and frankly cost also, so.
Okay.
But, but we're looking at those things, uh, so, uh, if, if there's anything that, you know, that would prevent you know, this committee from approving the plans, uh, please let us know.
Um, thank you sir, um, just a real quick question for me, is there any um, plants there that you are digging up that are native to the San Juan Batista historical, like I remember at, um, at JJ's, there was a rose bush that was an older rose bush, is there any of that, uh, shrubbery there at where you're living sir?
No, we, uh, there, there is, I don't know if that matters, but there's a, um, prickly pear cactus that was moved already, um, it was in the driveway. Obstructed.
Okay.
So, but that's the only thing that I think maybe of any interest, um.
Okay.
I don't know any other plants, um.
Okay.
And from a staff standpoint, uh, Chair Delgado, there, there wasn't anything noted in the historical review.
Okay, perfect, that's, you know, I just want to make sure that we cover all bases and are transparent because um, we just need to move forward with this, okay, with that, is there any public comments? Norma, is there any on the internet or, um, is there any there with you?
There's no one in the council chambers that wishes to speak.
Okay.
Thank you Brian, we do have someone who has raised their hands here on Zoom. And anyone else who is attending by Zoom, please raise your hand by using the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. I am going to bring in the one dial caller we have. If you unmute yourself by pressing star six, your three minute timer will start and please state your name for the record. Member of the public with the phone number 0512, you've been brought in, you had your hand raised to speak. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. You are still muted. You are still muted, member of the public. You've got to unmute yourself, I'm not able to unmute yours and mute you. Oh, and now the hand has been removed, so I am going to remove them and at this time we have no hands raised, Chair. Chair Delgado, you're muted.
I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Jackie Morris Lopez. Uh, do you have any comments, concerns or, or questions?
Um, just a comment, uh, reviewing the information presented, it looks very thorough, the, um, representation in comparison to the other bungalow cottage style, um, home on Second Street, Biviruti Park. It looks very similar. I'm sure with the plans and the, um, guidelines that they're going to be following and oversight and along the way updates, I think it's going to be a beautiful home. And as far as the landscaping, um, I just want to throw this out there that perhaps maybe they're not aware, but I think with the drought that we are in, there might afford them a rebate or some sort of, um, positive, uh, maybe monetary if they go with the drought guidelines. But I'm, I'm happy to see this and I'm glad that, um, things are going to be going in the right direction from the homeowners and the city stands to have a beautiful home on our, uh, bungalow, um, district that we are speaking to, thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Morris Lopez. Um, Chair, um, David Maderos, do you have any comments? Questions or concerns?
Yeah, I do, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, good. I got a couple of things. I got a couple of things here, uh, just minor things, uh, one question I have is, is this a major or minor project? I understand it's a minor.
This is a major project.
It's a major, yeah. Okay, and, and, and what? Okay. And, and, and what would be the reason for that? Just to, just to refresh everybody's mind? I think it's important.
Yeah, the major project is a project that has some significant impact on character defining features for the structure. And more minor would be something like paint or window replacement or something. You know, something that's not going to significantly affect the character defining feature of the structure. In this case, we're looking at pretty significant renovation work, so.
And that's, that's with the original structure.
Yes, and it's a judge, it's a judgment call that we make, yeah.
Yeah. Even it, even though it's a big addition, it could be still minor.
I, I, I tend to think that anything that involves in addition to a building that is, you know, mentioned within the context statement that we have as significant to a particular district, that would be a major thing that would go for the planning commission. I wouldn't attempt to process that as an administrative matter myself.
That said. Oh, yeah, the, the only, if we could, I know, I know that as far as the reviews go about the windows, the current windows kind of kind of stay, but I would, if there was some way we could put original type windows into that structure, that would be great. Other than that, I think, I think it's a wonderful project. I think it, it's great that we're bringing this, this home back to life. I know there's a lot of work that we need to do on it. And I really appreciate all, all the effort that's going into it. And thank everybody for being a participant. So I'm in favor of the recommendation from the Historic Resources Board to, to go forward with this project.
But one comment I'd like to make about the windows, the Historical Society has mentioned that they would consider our annual, this, this building, if it's going to be four oh one, four over one windows replacement, they would consider this to be an award winning renovation.
I'm all for that. Okay, that said, I'm ready to go forward with whatever we have to do at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maderos. Um, as like I said, I'm very impressed with what I, what I saw. I'm, thank you to the owners. I applaud you for getting the proper person to help you with historical renovation. I'm sorry that you have to go through this when you found the rot. It wasn't going to be that bad, so I, I don't have anything to comment, but good job. Thanks, Brian. Anything else?
That's it from staff.
Okay, so now we have to pass this, correct? Is there a resolution on here?
Yes, you have a resolution.
I had it, now I can't find it.
And.
Can you write it? Can you read it for me, Brian?
Yeah, your, your motion would be to approve a site plan and design review permit subject to conditions and based on findings contained in the resolution attached to the staff report dated October fourth, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
Okay, could I have a motion to pass this resolution?
I, I, I made a motion to move.
So, okay, I'll second the, the resolution twenty twenty two XXA relation of the planning of the city to move forward. Can we take a vote, Norma?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Chair Yolanda Delgado.
Yes.
Commissioner David Maderos.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jackie Morris Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously by members present.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff. Good job, Brian. Okay.
Thank you.
And now we're going to comments, six A, any, any planning commissioners have anything to comment about? Or wanted to see on the next meeting? David, Commissioner David Maderos, do you have anything?
No further comments. I'm excited about the next meeting. That's about it. I'm looking forward to it if there's going to be one.
David, do you have anything that? David, do you want anything? Do you have anything that you want to see on the next meeting?
None at this time, no.
Okay.
I got a lot of things in my mind right now, so that's a bad time to ask.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Jackie Morris Lopez, you have anything that you'd like to see next meeting?
Well, just my comment, right now.
Commissioner Lopez, Morris Lopez, we can't hear you. You're fading in and out. Did we lose her, Norma?
Once again to Brian for the hard work.
I do think that we have lost Jackie's sound.
Vice Chair Morris Lopez, we've lost you and we haven't heard anything you said. Could you please repeat yourself?
I, I did hear, hear Commissioner Morris Lopez thank me for my hard work, so that's all, that's all I need to hear.
And we'll give that a.
I second it.
Yeah.
That's great.
I just, um, thank you for, let's all be onboarding, smoothing through this process of learning, like the city needs to help. We needed help also. We are engulfing ourselves in a lot of training and on the Robert's rule. So I thank the commissioners here and I thank Mr. Korea for joining us. Jackie, are you back? We lost her, Norma?
She is present. I'm sure she can hear us, but we do not have sound from her at this point.
And, and I want to thank the public for attending and the, the comments. And thank you for joining us in these meetings. With that, do you have anything to say, Brian?
No, I would just, as far as the director is concerned, if that's what you're asking. You know, we know, you know, we have recently concluded the public engagement portion of the active transportation plan prod, project that we have. And the next thing will be a preliminary, preliminary report that comes out for review. You also in the past have considered a set of guiding principles for the community plan program. And the city council decided to suspend that consideration of those principles pending further review by the Urban Growth Boundary Ad Hoc Committee. A couple of planning commissioners are on that committee, so that look forward to that scheduled for the end of October, I believe, or another date to be announced. So that's it for now. The community plan is going to continue, but it won't continue until after the Urban Growth Boundary Committee ad hoc committee meets and shares its comments, recommendations to the, to the city council.
Perfect. Thank you. Vice Chair Jackie Morris Lopez is back on. Jackie, would you go ahead and, and speak, please?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. Okay, great. Good meeting, Chair and staff. Thank you, Brian. And also congratulations to the homeowners on the project with the bungalow. Just brief announcement, I will be attending a planning commission academy workshop this Friday, October seventh in the City of Cupertino. It is a nine to four P M. Training. It will go over, it will go over planning, it will go over CEQA, it will go over some very important process that
We're losing you, Jackie. Jackie, we're losing you.
And I hope to report back that next month.
Yeah.
I just said that I'm going to the Friday and.
Brian, could we have a slot for Jackie to review what she learns on the, the planning and training this Friday? I'm unable to take, to go. I have a family reunion in Las Vegas.
Yeah, we have two commissioners signed up. We have two commissioners signed up for that training, both Tony, Korea and Jackie Morris Lopez. So I'm, I'm sure there'll be plenty to talk about at the next meeting.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay, with that, we are ready to adjourn. Do you have a, a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting, the planning commission meeting for this day.
And I second it. Norma, can we take a roll call, please?
Absolutely, Chair. Chair Yolanda Delgado.
Yes.
Commissioner David Maderos.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jackie Morris Lopez.
Jackie, are you there? Norma, can we adjourn with two or do we have to wait for her?
You can. You do have a majority of adjournments and so seeing no further business, Chair, you do have the prerogative to adjourn the meeting.
We are adjourning. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Norma. Thank you, public. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Bye, good night. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good meeting, good meeting.
Now, for the record, the meeting has officially adjourned at seven sixteen P M.
Thank you, Norma.